Good evening. Observing the time and the presence of quorum, I'd like to bring this October 20th, 2025, meeting the Acton Select Board to order. We'll start, as we usually do, with residents' concerns.
Scott Sullivan, 8 Patriots Road. Standing here is the Chair of the Acton Finance Committee. I just have two quick points. First point, the presentation from Arrow Street to the Finance Committee on October 14th. There were six scenarios for the DPW building presented. The allocation for staff ranged from 5,300 square feet to 9,600 square feet. The staffing space should be consistent across all scenarios. FinCom and Select Board have agreed that staffing has been the highest problem to solve, and I believe that we should be able to come to consensus on what that space should be. Second point, also in the October 14th Finance Committee meeting, additional information was requested and provided to provide the taxpayers a better understanding of the DPW project, which would be a work-study on staff and a more detailed equipment study. Both the size of the staffing space and the number of vehicles to be garaged both drive the building size and therefore the total cost. Analysis on both will be needed, and I am, since I didn't, was unable to take a vacation this year, I am volunteering my vacation days to do that analysis if the board or town wants me to do that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Derek Pinto. I'm at Chadwick Street in Acton. So I want to begin by thanking the Select Board, because I understand that work and community service is sometimes hard, requires a lot of hours, and I do appreciate your time and your service, so thank you for that. The last time I visited with you was October 6th, and on that occasion, I read an excerpt of an email that I had sent on September 7th. So there was, this was related to very urgent safety matters, a traffic pattern that's next to my house, Chadwick and River. And at that time, I had let you know that it was a month, and there had been no action. So I didn't receive any answers, and no appointment had been made to attend to the matter at hand. I was subsequently visited by two engineers. I, but this was not in response to my visit to Select Board. I thought that my visit on the 6th, my initial visit here, and after hearing my serious concerns, that somebody from the Select Board, somebody from Town Management, or a leader of the relevant department would contact me and give me a status on the project and let me know how it was moving forward. In the end, none of that happened. So my neighbors expressed disappointment, and they noted that they had had similar experiences in trying to move things along, and they noted the River Street Park project is another one that is incomplete, also right next to the house. Anyway, on the 7th of October, two engineers visited me. This was pre-arranged. It wasn't as a result of my visit here. A summary of a couple of those points, a couple of things that we covered, had to do with the 25% design, which was, would be referenced going forward, and support the potential installation of a stop sign and a stop bar for vehicles. And he was going to pursue that with the engineering department. The other item was that they were going to let me know where the project stood in terms of a 75% design. Thank you. So the net, I'll skip ahead then. So I trust that people that are on the thread in communication, that I'm in communications with, or this meeting and now raising profile and having it on the record, that I'd get answers to my questions. Are the projects still in the 25% design stage? How will they be advanced without secured funding? When do we get timelines and deliverables? Is it common practice to move ahead with multiple projects when designs are only 25% complete? Where does this fall on the project priority list? Those questions have been hanging out there for several weeks. So it's my hope, by raising visibilities, that some additional personnel with institutional memory and resources will assist me in getting me the information that I seek. And in the spirit of collaboration, I'll tell you that my next moves are going to be to contact FinCom more formally to ascertain the funding status, and further contact with my neighbors to discuss the next move. I look forward to updating you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Anyone online? Nope. Okay. Thank you. Moving along, Chair update. Most of the points that I'd like to make tonight are later on in the agenda, so I'll address them then. One observation I would like to make is a moment of remembrance for Sergeant Robert Rhodes, who was longtime employee of the Acton Police Department, passed away last week. Bob was a Korean War veteran. He began his service with the town of Acton in the late 1950s, early 1960s, when the Acton Police Department was in the small office now occupied by the Town Manager in this building. And he served for, until 1996, in the, what was the new police station, which has now been demolished. And although he was no longer serving in the department, he was able to observe the construction of the new public safety facility in the early 2000s. Bob was a great individual, a good mentor for members of the police department, someone that I served with and always enjoyed my time with him. And he served in sort of a transition period of Acton going from being a very rural farming community right until tremendous amounts of development and commercial development. So we missed, there are going to be services this Saturday at Acton Funeral Home. So just a thought to his family. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. A few announcements from the Economic Development Office. It's Restaurant Week. Several businesses are highlighting some of their new dishes and other promos this week as part of Acton Restaurant Week. Actonma.gov/business to get the full listing of the specials, but I encourage you, I encourage you to go to Acton Restaurant Week, Acton Restaurants all the time, and hopefully you can mention that this helped you, encourage you to go there. Other things happening this week are, there'll be a mural unveiling on Friday morning, the, at the Gold's Plaza, by a local artist, Elizabeth Ames. And I encourage you to stop by that. If not, just check it out. It'll be, it's covered in a tarp right now, but you'll be able to see it after that morning. And that's from Economic Development. From Historic Preservation, or Future Historic Preservation, I guess I should say, you may have noticed that the bell did not ring at 6 o'clock when we were waiting for this meeting to start. That is because Tom and some of our other staff worked with a structural engineer to do some kind of conceptual ideas for how to do a preservation of the bell tower in the future. But while they're up there, they noticed some needs to make some more immediate measures implemented here, to make sure that we can have that thing up there forever. So as a precaution, as recommended, we have turned off the bells until we can get the structural components of the tower reinforced. So that's, it could be a temporary thing, but ultimately it needs to be a permanent fix. So more to come on what exactly that'll look like, but I just wanted to mention that to the public and to the Select Board, who I know uses that, those chimes for your internal clocks.
Any points that any members would like to make at this point? Alyssa.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge that we had a great event right out in front of Town Hall and on the Town Common on Saturday afternoon. Acton had a No Kings Rally who, that was organized by Leslie Johnson, who's a member of the Acton Commission on Disabilities. I'm going to say that about 600 people and dogs were in attendance. Deputy Chief Sterniolo estimated 500, but he arrived towards the end of the event after several people had already left. It was great to have support from the police department. I really appreciate Officer Ritchie for being on-site the entire event. She parked her patrol car in a location where she had a great view of the area and was ready to assist if needed. And I also wanted to give a shout-out to Spencer Cardillo for setting up a great sound system, and we had a team of marshals. Stella Ko, Miriam Lezak, Titus Cow, and Jim Carey joined, this Jim and myself, to ensure folks were using the crosswalks and allowing foot traffic on the sidewalks. And while I appreciate every single attendee who came, I have the most appreciation for the unicorn, the giraffe, the panda, the chicken, and the narwhal. So you can look on social media for great photos of the event. Both of our representatives, Saina and Catalda, were there to speak, and there was dancing, and there was singing, and there were lots of folks of all ages there. So it was a wonderful event, and thank you, everyone who made that possible and attended.
Okay. Under New and Special Business, consider the recommendation for Department Public Works' Facility Building Committee for Alternative Design for Department Public Works Facility. I'll start off, we will have the architects virtually in attendance. The recommendation of the Building Committee has been submitted, it was in your packet. I'll just go through a couple of the points. Meeting was October 15th, and we evaluated the numerous alternatives that had been developed by Arrow Street. There were a total of six options that we looked at, although one of them was the original proposal that we brought, almost brought to Town Meeting in the spring. We left that in the mix just for comparison purposes. We look back historically at how we got to this point, and back in 2021, we had a feasibility study that was done by Weston and Sampson. And initially, they suggested that the new facility needs to be 52,723 square feet. And they broke down all of the relevant areas that needed to be addressed. During the initial process, that size was reduced to 47,719 square feet. The, what we brought to the May 2025 Town Meeting was 44,872 feet. So we, we keep bringing the size of this down. If we were to bring that same project back again, and with the idea of beginning construction sometime in the summer of '27, projected cost of that building, total project cost would be over $39 million. So we looked at a number of different options with Arrow Street. Option one, and I would certainly refer folks to this document, there's some copies available. It's also available on our website, along with a wealth of other information. So option one is a slightly reduced version of what we did not bring to Town Meeting, bring it down to 40,000 square feet. Estimated cost, about 34.5 million. Option two is to only renovate the existing building. So we'd end up with a building of only 19,200 square feet, the same footprint as what was built around 1970. Just the cost of that renovation would be over $11 million. Option three would retain a portion of that existing building and then attach a fleet storage garage. We'd end up with a 33,000, 33,500 square foot building, cost about $28 million. Option 4A, renovate the existing building and adding a standalone fleet storage garage. We'd end up with a total of 43,000 square feet. That would be almost $34 million if that project were to proceed to construction in the summer of '27. Option 4B is to convert the existing building into a fleet storage garage and add a standalone We'd end up with a total of 37,523 square feet. Estimated cost of about $29 million. So we had a wide-ranging discussion. A lot of these, obviously, there've been some tremendous compromises made with the size of the building. There are certain areas of the original building program which would not be addressed, one of them being the Wash Bay, which we think is very important. But in the end, we focused our attention on three major topics: affordability, functionality, and longevity. And this was at the recommendation of the Finance Committee member on our Building Committee, Greg Jarboe. Affordability, 4B, is about $634 a square foot, and it's one of the cheaper of the options at $29,725, $10 million less than what the original project would have cost. Functionality, it was, we're deliberately stressing the importance of providing adequate space for staff and for operations. Clean, safe environment for our employees, adequate work areas, and superior support staff. So looking back at the feasibility study, administration, the need for administration space in the feasibility study, they estimated we needed 4,936 square feet. 4B provides 4,800 square feet. The feasibility study called for 3,800 square feet for staff support. 4B provides 3,492 square feet. 4B provides 2,800 square feet for workshops. Feasibility calls for 3,400 square feet. And vehicle maintenance, feasibility study called for 7,383 square feet. 4B provides 7,127 square feet. 4B focuses the investment on a new building for staff that meets all energy and building codes, and will have a life expectancy of 50 years. Also repurposes the 50-plus-year-old building for fleet storage, which will provide more parking areas than now exist, but not make a huge financial commitment. Estimated remaining life of the repurposed building is uncertain, but probably the building will last for between 15 and 20 years in its revised use, and it can be replaced later, and it is located on the site in such a way that it can be removed and a new fleet storage building built at that time. So it was the unanimous vote of the members in attendance, option 4B is a reasonable compromise that will achieve the majority of the goals at a realistic cost. So we hope to be able to move forward with that. We do have the architects available here to be able to address any questions in more detail. One of the things that I would caution folks about is that we're at the very early stages of this. There's a lot of questions that have been raised, there's a lot of uncertainties, frankly, exactly what sort of structural reinforcement we're going to need for the existing building. Those will have to be developed over time with help of structural engineers. So I would also point out that the, all of the options that have been provided, all positive, using air-source heat pumps, that's a question that can be revisited, whether we go with air source or go with geothermal as a heat source. As you know, we somewhat constrained with needing to go with a fossil-free situation. There's also some questions that have been raised in the past about, you know, the site. Well, the site's too big. The, you've got 40 parking spaces, you don't need 40 parking spaces. So I, those are a lot of issues that will have to be addressed further, but I will specifically, as far as the parking situation, fully staffed, we've got about 23 people working out of that building. Every one of them drives their own personal vehicle to get to work. So if they're all there, we've got 17 extra parking spaces. Frequently, town vehicles are used, are placed in those parking spaces. We also need to have space for members of the public to come forward, contractors that might be coming by. So we think it's an adequate parking space, parking site, not too generous, and frankly, a parking lot is probably the cheapest portion of this entire project. There's also some, been some discussion about, well, do you really need your winter fleet parked inside? So the Town Manager did some research and came up with a number of, they call it "winter response" events. So we've got two major items. We've got snow plowing, and then we have salt and sand and ice situations. And folks seem to think that with climate change, we won't have as many snowstorms. And probably, anecdotally, thinking back to when I was shoveling people's driveways, yeah, it seemed like we had a lot more snow back then. But what might happen, we don't know. Couple of observations I made in my years working for the town, some of the worst storms we had to deal with as far as snow were actually not in true winter. Those of you who've been around here long enough can certainly remember the Halloween storm that we had in October. That was severe enough that we had entire streets closed for three or four days with downed trees and energized wires, all because of a heavy wet snow hitting trees that still had a full head of foliage. I know my friend Anne Chang in the back there sat in a cold house for, I think, four days and couldn't get out because her entire street was blocked off. Probably the worst storm I ever worked in was May 9th and 10th, 1977. Again, not what you would call a winter condition, but it really knocked the town back on its heels. But looking in what would be considered true winter operations. In 2019, the crew went out and salted and treated streets 37 times. They plowed eight times, 45 winter responses. 2020, 23 salt events, nine plow events, for a total of 32. 21, we had 33 salt events, six plow events, total of 39. 22, 43 salt events, nine plow events, total of 52. 23, we had 42 salt events, 22 times when the crew was out plowing, so it was 64 times. And 24, 32 salt and treated events, 12 plow events, for a total of 44. So it's really important when we start evaluating all of these and think about, you know, keeping your fleet inside so it's ready to respond. That's not a one-off once or twice during the winter. That's pretty much continuous operation. When you figure in the period from November until the middle of April, that's a pretty constant turnover. So I think those are important factors to keep in mind as we move forward and start evaluating this. So to my colleagues here on the board, that's the recommendation, unanimous recommendation from members of the Building Committee, that we move ahead and further develop option 4B. And certainly, I'm here to answer any questions more appropriately and with more expertise. We have our design team right here, who can also respond to any questions we might have. Thank you.
Can I ask a stupid question that I think has been answered 1,000 times?
Go right ahead.
How many fleet trucks do we have that need to be kept indoors?
The winter fleet, I believe we're looking at 31 vehicles.
I thought 32 was my number that I had in my head.
And just as another data point, especially during these plow events, you bring in extra contractors, which adds almost that size of a fleet again. So in order to keep the town, open the town properly for a big storm, we could be looking at 60 vehicles either owned or hired by the town.
I am stuck on this. I'm sorry I didn't attend the October 15th meeting. I don't see why we would settle for 18 fleet inside when we have 32 trucks. I, I know that I've spoken about visiting other DPWs. I would like to get that information out somehow. It's sort of frustrating to see or hear that, you know, some of our surrounding towns have the luxury of just parking the plow, that a truck can just, you know, pull up to the plow, stick it on his vehicle, and be on his way. So I don't know, from efficiency standpoint, how, I don't know. So I'll listen.
So I would, and certainly be happy to hear the Public Works Director's comments on this. Yes, it is a compromise. There's no question. We're attempting to respond to the, the questions that have been raised. If you page through that document a little bit more, there's another scenario for parking. Thank you. So this, this is the existing building if it's been reused, and when we have a situation where we know that there's going to be severe weather, the sacrifice that we'd have to make is rather than chevronning in the vehicles as shown on the plan and allowing 18, there is a way of stacking the vehicles, which is shown in this plan. It's not ideal, but it's, that shows stacking which will actually allow some better travel lanes between the vehicles. But, you know, there's no way of, that I'm going to be able to tell you that it's as good as a brand-new building. But it's the realm of the possible rather than the desirable, I'm afraid.
Mr. Chair, I wonder if, for, for board members or maybe members of the audience who hadn't seen the previous presentations, if, if we could take seen the previous presentations, if, if we could take five minutes or seven minutes or so for Arrow Street, who's been, who's done the study, to just do a quick overview of how we got to the 4B or how the building committee got to the 4B?
Please do.
So, yeah, if you, I think, thank you.
We have somewhat of an abbreviated presentation from our last one, which was to the finance committee last week. So, we're not going to go deeply into each of the options, but nevertheless, we'll show it briefly, and then we can go deep into the preferred option, the recommendate option. And we can circle back because we do have those available if folks want to hone in on something on a specific option.
Hello, my name is Andrea, and I'm with Larry at Arrow Street Architects. We began the process by looking at the Weston and Sampson original design, which we're referring to here as the 40% DD set. That's where it left off. And that's what's shown in the top line that's highlighted in the light yellow. And we started with option one, where we took that design and tried to shrink it, looking at ways to reduce extra space, extra circulation. If there was any program space that we felt could be cut, we reduced the, the program area. And it was about a 10, 9%, 10% savings. And then, we looked at with option two of renovating the current building as is, not without any additions, but bringing it up to code for accessibility, energy, and, what's the third? Code, energy, and some structural repairs to the envelope and the structural framing of the CMU walls. And option three, then we took that same concept of renovating the existing, but what if we tore down half? I'm going to go to the images, and I'll come back to that. So, option one was a reduced program area of the DD set. In the upper right corner is option two, where we're renovating. It doesn't really give you, it makes it a slightly safer place to work, but it doesn't really address any of the program issues. Option three is where I left off, where you renovate half the building and keep the program there. And then, the southern half of the building would be removed, and then an addition would be attached for the 31 fleet, winter fleet vehicles. And then, we looked at option four in the bottom right, where we took that new fleet storage building and moved it up and renovated the existing building for the DPW offices, support spaces, the workshops, and the maintenance shops. And you ended up with a little bit more area than they needed. Disadvantages of that compared to option 4B were higher cost, and you're, and you're putting all the money in the fleet storage building versus option 4B, which is here, which I think you've already gone over. You're getting a new admin support maintenance shop building that would be energy efficient. And then, the fleet storage, we're showing the 18 trucks with the possibility to expand that to the full, full fleet within the footprint of the building, or it offers more flexibility because you could also in the future tear that down and then build an appropriately-sized fleet storage building. And other advantages of 4B, that new building, the one with the multi-colors, admin support space helps to shield the noise from moving the trucks in and out, as well as in the maintenance shops, they're, they have the four bays that are entered in away from the neighborhood.
Before we proceed with that, I'd just like to make a note. We had had on the agenda for 6:30 PM an annual tax classification hearing. That has been continued until November 3rd at 6:30. So, for those folks that were wishing to watch that tax classification hearing, come back in two weeks. All right. Questions from my colleagues. Alyssa.
At last week's meeting, the DPW Building Committee discussed the assessed value of the building, and I'm wondering if we got any updated information from our assessor on that because there was a question about whether or not the property card on the town website was accurate, even though it's dated 2025. Just wondering about that.
Thank you for the question. We confirmed with the town assessor that the building value is $3,890,800.
So, I guess I'd like to, thank you, Tom, follow up on that comment. One of the building committee members pointed out that if we're going to borrow money, a 30-year bond for a renovation, a solution for this project, that the building itself should last as long as, or longer than the, than the bond. So, so renovating the entire building, even though it's the least expensive option, it still is undersized, doesn't meet our program needs, and then won't actually extend the life of the building beyond 15, maybe 20 years. So, to me, that seems like a very irresponsible way to use taxpayer dollars. You know, $11 million, sounds like it's more than twice the, the value of the building, and we would still be paying off that loan even after there's a need to demolish the building if we went with option two.
Other questions from my colleagues? David.
Thank you. Maybe that, to follow up on Alyssa's point, maybe that requires a little bit of follow-up research. Would we bond the renovation of the old building for fleet storage at a different term than the, the new building for facilities? So, that, that's just a question which we should, you know, move, move forward with. I just want to say that, you know, what we're discussing today is what alternative we should move forward with because we can't afford to design all the alternatives, right? And so, you know, we have to, we have to choose one. I really like the building committee's choice of 4B. It's significantly lower cost than last year's proposal, and it's even lower cost than version, choice, option 4A, which is the, kind of the, the, the second choice of things that meet a reasonable amount of the, the needs of, of the department. I like the fact that 4B concentrates on the facilities for the people rather than the facilities for the fleet storage. I think that is the right place to invest most of the money, and that's, that's, that's the case here. I also like the fact that the operating cost of 4B would be cheaper than, than 4A. And, and I do understand Alyssa's point of the, the term of the bonds for the, the renovation portion, but I think that the 4A would invest more money in the old structure than, than this one. And so, I also appreciate that, you know, with the, the asterisk that we need to, to look at, at the, the terms of the, of the bonds. I want to make a couple also, general comments. The office space that, you know, that Mr. Sullivan referred to is 6,000 square feet plus or minus for all the alternatives. One of the alternatives for A has a lot more office space because there was just a lot more area in the old building if you take out the fleet storage. And so, that, that's just kind of a ramification of that alternative. If we take that one out, all the others are, are much, much closer. I also want to point out that the office space for our DPW is not generic as we might find with an employer in the area. I used to work for IBM, and you went in and you, any employee could, could take any desk because all you needed was your laptop and your coffee cup. And you walk in in the morning, you see which desk is free, take it, plug your laptop into the monitor, and then you were ready to go. That's not the case for the DPW office employees, each of which has a, not a generic role, but a very specific role. And the engineering plans and the like are much more paper-oriented than is the, the situation for a tech office or a financial office. I also want to say that in 4B, we're taking the, it would take the sacrifice, if you will, out of the, the vehicle storage, right? We'd be designing the, the facilities pretty optimally for, for office space, for the shops, for the mechanic space. And compared to the proposal we had last year, take a hit in fleet storage where it would store about, roughly about two-thirds of the equipment that we have, but probably enough for the winter. In any case, it's twice as much as what we have now. So, I, you know, coming to an exact number of how many vehicles we have and how many we could have, since we're only storing them, two-thirds of them in this, in this proposal, that, that, you know, whether it's, it's 60%, 65%, or 70%, it's still not all of them. And so, you know, the, the, the counting of one or two pieces of equipment is, it doesn't make any difference in 4B. It would make a difference for 4A, but it doesn't make a difference for 4B. Anyway, I think the, the choice that the building committee made is very, very good, and, and I think we should move forward with it.
Thank you. Other comments? Jim.
I wanted to thank Arrow Street for coming in, in a very difficult situation and finding, helping us to find a way forward. And wanted to thank the, the DPW Building Committee for, you know, rising to the challenge of, you know, sorting through, you know, what had been a very difficult and contentious process and finding consensus on, you know, the general plan, the option 4B. And I'm persuaded by, by the evidence and by the fact that it was unanimous, that 4B is the direction to go in. It's the direction that would allow us, you know, it's, it's, it's the place where we should put our next set of design money. And then, start preparing for, you know, the, the educational campaign that's going to be required.
Thank you. David.
I just want to make one follow-up comment on a point that Dean made. All of these alternatives, Arrow Street made them all be, use air source heat pumps, just so we're comparing apples to apples. If we get into it and we would like to use, or we think we might want to use geothermal instead of air source heat pumps, that can be a separate ROI calculation, right? Separate from these, you know, these alternatives. And in fact, I made a, a, a comment at the building committee meeting that we could even choose to let town meeting decide that, right? So, we could have this, this building on, as an article, and then the article after that could say, we could add so many millions to this project, but save so many hundreds of thousands a year in operating costs, and, and let, and let town meeting decide.
Thank you. Alyssa.
I just want to add a few comments based on things that I've heard from, from David and Jim, and also you, Dean, and also you, Fran, from everybody. So, I mentioned that I thought it would be irresponsible to spend such a large amount of money on renovating the old building that doesn't extend the life as long. We're already going to be spending more money. Jim, you just mentioned additional design costs, right? So, we spent over a million dollars to design, you know, the original 40% DD. So, we're going to be spending that additional money. We also are going to, sooner than 50 years, need to add a new fleet storage that's right-sized, and we're going to need to do that because the renovated building won't last as long. And potentially, a future addition of a wash bay, which is possible. It sounds to me like only with option 4B, and I think that that is a really critical and protective element for the environment, for the groundwater, which I was very disappointed was removed from the original project that we brought to the ballot box. And Jim, you also mentioned the educational campaign needed, and I did hear something at the DPW Building Committee meeting last week that I wasn't aware of, even though I, you know, followed this project very closely. Anne mentioned that the DPW Building Committee had done a lot of work to bring down costs even before Weston and Sampson did the value engineering. So, that was something that I wasn't aware of. So, I think we need to really keep in mind the information, because this is going back years, right? So, we need to keep in mind the information that folks who have been paying attention, like me, and who haven't been paying attention, will need to know. And then, the last thing that I'll say is about the energy and, and winter program. So, David, you mentioned that the energy operations are a lower, or the operations are a lower cost with 4B, and I just want to point out that that's because in the new building, the, the staff building has the highest energy use, is my understanding. You know, you're heating and cooling for humans instead of vehicles. So, that's why we will see significant savings there relative to the other options. And Dean, you mentioned the winter responses and how we're not plowing as much snow. However, our operations are going to only increase precisely because of climate change because we're not having the snow, which maybe Corey, you can explain this for folks better if people are curious. But there are more operations for treating the roads because the temperature is higher in the winter, and so, we're not getting snow, we're getting, you know, freezing rain, which is requiring a lot more salting of, of the roads. And I think that might be all my additional points I wanted to bring up. Thanks.
Thank you. Fran.
So, riffing off of what Jim had said, are we going to town hall, a town meeting to ask for additional design money?
The, this, once we get a decision as to The, this, once we get a decision as to what direction we're going, we'll certainly, town manager will have to work with the design team and figure out what we'll have to go for. I envision that what will happen is we'll go to town meeting in May of '26 to look for design funds and have a design developed and hopefully be able to go to a special town meeting maybe in December of '26 for construction funds. By that time, we'll have had enough time to, you know, fully tease out all of the issues with the building, have some good estimates. We'll be able to go to town meeting. And I'd like to make the presentation at town meeting. And then subsequent to that, if we get a proper vote at town meeting, then we'll put it to the ballot. And that time is to be determined. It could be at the annual election or it could be at some other time. But I think it's critical that we be able to get this in front of folks at town meeting rather than the way we did it the last time, which did not succeed awfully well. So exactly how much money we're going to be looking for, I'll, I think that's a question for another day. But we would certainly not be looking for construction funds or an override vote for this building in April and May of '26. We'd be looking for a much smaller amount of money for design and see what we can, what we can use from previous plans and what needs to be brought up new. All right. Alyssa?
I have a question about involvement of the Finance Committee. Somebody mentioned at town meeting that it was really important for the Select Board and Finance Committee to be in alignment, and it's very difficult for voters to make a decision when they don't have the same position. So what do you envision? I don't know if we're planning to vote to authorize the team to move on with further developing this plan tonight, or if we will have another discussion perhaps jointly with FinCom?
Well, there's a couple of ways we could do this. I think that the kind of lingering questions that I've heard from Finance Committee have a lot to do with, you know, size of spaces and that sort of thing. And I think that we can address those, and I highly recommend that we have another face-to-face meeting with the Finance Committee across the table and hash out a lot of these size decisions. I don't think that there's a great deal of debate about the function of the building. I think it's a question of size, and I think that can be driven by, that will drive some modifications to the design. So I think we've got sufficient time to develop that, to have that meeting with the Finance Committee, hopefully to come to a final decision on the space, to work out, you know, what we need in the way of cubicles and staff support areas and that sort of thing. And once we have that, we can relay that information to the design team. I don't think that the design of the building is going to advance very quickly over the next month or two. In amongst other things, I'll look to the town manager or the assistant town manager to confirm or deny that. But I think we probably need to take a breath once we, once we determine a path forward conceptually, and then we can do the fine tuning. As I said earlier, there's going to be a lot of fine tuning that's got to be done. We still have a lot of questions about what kind of structural reconstruction is going to have to be done to the existing building, for instance. All those things can be developed. So ideally, I'd like to have a vote so that we know with some certainty which option we're going ahead with. I think we still have time to modify the size of option 4B, based on any input we get from the Finance Committee and any decisions we have. If, on the other hand, colleagues wish to have the meeting with Finance first, we could do that, but I, it's probably going to delay for a few weeks before we can make a decision. I can't, I don't envision that we're going to be able to get a meeting of the two boards together between now and our next meeting on November 3rd. It seems pretty tight time-wise. So that's what I would, and I will open it to the Chair of the Finance Committee. Please come forward, Scott.
I'll be quick just on the point you're discussing. Of the options presented, the 4B, I think the benefit of, and I don't have consensus from the Finance Committee, but I'm just speaking as the Chair and my own personal perspective on this. Think for, the benefit of 4B from my perspective is that you could build the main staffing zone without disrupting operations. And when we were looking at the original plan design from Weston and Sampson, we were looking at a two-year build and relocating staff and having people use half a building, and that was exposing to a lot of cost and time. So I think the benefit of 4B is that you can build it, wait till it's done, and then move the people in. So I do believe that there, that Arrow Street has presented five scenarios that kind of encompass all that we would be asking someone to build out and model. As I mentioned with the Select Board and during my Finance Committee meeting last week, the Select Board and the Finance Committee meeting are going to meet together to discuss all scenarios. There are scenarios that do not require building plans that have been presented, and we're just going to discuss them, show pros and cons, record the meeting, and have it as a reference point, just so that when we get to the spring and if this does come to town meeting and people have questions, well, what about this and what about that? We should have a meeting that should encompass all possible scenarios so people can reference everybody's perspective on it and have it be recorded, and then we can move on to bigger and more important things that town is facing, like health insurance expense.
Thank you. Mr. Charbo?
Greg Charbo, 5 Cherokee Road. I'm a twofer. I'm a member of the Finance Committee, but I'm also a member of the DPW Building Committee. And let me tell you, just from my perspective, that reaching a compromise is hard. But one of the fun moments last week when we reached it was my colleague, En Chang, and I looked at each other and said, we're voting alike? Excuse me? How did that happen? So the process was thorough. Everybody ended up making compromises. One of the things that Dean mentioned at the beginning that I think we are going to want to communicate clearly to the public is that we were trying to balance three very different things, two of which surfaced at town meeting. People who voted yes for the previous proposal said we need a new DPW building. People who voted no said it costs too much. And those two issues by themselves would have made this a hard decision. How do you reconcile the bare minimum of what we need versus something that we can actually afford? And then one of the things that I compliment Arrow Street for is they brought a third dimension that I don't think we debated back in the spring, which is, well, it doesn't have to be new versus nothing. What about renovation? And then it became, do we renovate everything? Or do we renovate the fleet side? Or do we renovate the employee side? They looked at all those options, and there are trade-offs. But the one that we ended up voting unanimously for last week puts people first. It's the employees. We've got to take care of that. And that's something that the Finance Committee has discussed, and no, we haven't voted explicitly on it, but that certainly is something we've heard before. And as for the vehicles, well, you know, I think this is where Anne and I were surprised that we agreed, is that, yeah, maybe we just can't solve every problem in the next year or two, but let's get the essential ones tackled first. This is a much more affordable proposal than the one that failed. This is a much more functional solution than what we have now. And the last option that we wrestled with was longevity. And you know what? This gets us closer to solving that issue too. So it wasn't easy, but yeah, everybody basically found that, yeah, compromise isn't always popular. It's not always what you go in with. But we also decided, the town also expressed their feelings this spring and said, why can't you guys get together? And the answer is because it's hard. And some of those issues aren't easily solved. Well, we're coming closer. We may not be there yet, and there's going to be steps to go, but at least we're going to be arguing on the same page.
Thank you. Before we proceed, we did have another public hearing that was set for 7:00 PM. I'll just read through the legal notice. It has been withdrawn, but legally I have to read the notice. Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on October 20th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, 204 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, and virtually on the application of Jose Mauricio for a use special permit for an event venue under zoning bylaw, Section 10.3, at 77 Powder Mill Road, Unit 2B. Application materials and how to participate remotely are available online at an Acton Town Hall. The applicant has requested to withdraw application without prejudice. And then, since it's almost 7:10, I will read a second public hearing notice.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Do we have to do anything for that last one? Do we have to vote to close the public hearing or vote to take no action?
I would recommend that, and also I would recommend waiting until after 7:10 to read the next one, as much as it's not going to impact people in the room. I just think we have to.
Would you like a motion?
I would.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing for 77 Powder Mill Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstentions? Okay, it's closed.
And Mr. Chair, I move that we take no action on the application for 77 Powder Mill Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Take no action. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. And we'll get back to the next one momentarily. Cory, not that I want to put you on the spot, but I do. So do you have any thoughts you'd like to add to this? You've been a member of the committee, you've been involved in it, and more importantly, you live down there. So what do you think?
Yeah, like everybody said, been a lot of compromises, a lot of discussion about various things. I think with option 4B, we are putting the employees first. We're doing the investment in the safe workspaces for the mechanics, the other employees and their workshops, the admin space. So I think if we, looking at that and trying to figure out where we want to prioritize the first allotment, I think that's a good spot. And then I think when you look at the vehicles and the discussion of the size and the need, I think repurposing the existing building where it can, when you look at the design, it can safely accommodate 18, but then in the storm events, you could, not as tightly, but you could stack the vehicles to get the winter fleet inside. And then if we bring in some additional, if there's a major storm, if trees down, there's a possibility of getting the extra equipment in there. So I think it's a good compromise of trying to get a vehicle storage that we need, and this kind of, I think, circles around that where it's not quite the size, but we can make it work and do stacking. I know we talked about doing some further evaluation as far as garage doors in or keeping the garage bays that are in the fleet side so it would allow easier means of getting in and out. So I think a lot of that has to be vetted out down the road as we get into the study. But I think this is sort of a good compromise of looking at the priorities and the needs and trying to find a workaround that is a good balance for all that.
Thank you. David?
I would just like to ask Arrow Street a question. Mr. Sullivan commented earlier that this alternative had the advantage that we can build the new space without affecting the old space. It makes for the transition easier. Can you talk about how long do you think the renovation would take of the second? So if we build a new space, move all the employees into the new space, and then have to take the vehicles out of the, the old building in order to gut it and renovate it for equipment storage? Do you have an idea for how long that part of the project would take? Is that half a year? Is that a year? What is that?
Essentially, what is interesting about it is we're turning it into a barn, and to the extent that we're trying to fix and waterproof things and not necessarily turn it into the type of habitable space that the rest of the building needs. So typically, I think of a renovation like that of about a year, maybe 14 months, depending. I think a big issue with that building is going to be, to what extent are there hazardous materials that need to be removed? Because those you have to do originally to start with, and then you can start the construction work. But the nice thing is, you know, it's pretty clean construction and pretty, can move along pretty quickly.
Thank you. Jim?
I was thinking about this conundrum of scheduling and the Finance Committee. So the way Scott in particular described a joint finance, I mean, a joint finance and Select Board meeting seemed like that could be after both boards have found their recommendation. It doesn't, it's not a meeting to wrestle out a recommendation. It's a, it's a meeting to review the alternatives and get that, you know, get all that information recorded and to discuss anything we want to discuss about the next layer of detail without having to make decisions right away. So what that suggests to me, and also the fact that we, you know, don't have a lot of extra design money sitting around right now, it suggests to me that the, that a good way to proceed would be to leave space for the Finance Committee at their next meeting to find out what their recommendation is when they all take a vote together, and then, you know, affirm that at our next meeting, assuming that, you know... And then, you know, affirm that at our next meeting, assuming that, you know, we all end up with 4B. If they end up on some other choice than 4B, then that's a whole other fork in the road that's going to excitingly blow everything up. And then we'll have to figure out how to deal with that. But in terms of sort of repairing the, you know, the bifurcated decision making that happened last year between the Finance Committee and the Select Board, I would prefer, I'd prefer to let the Finance Committee, you know, have their time to come up with a recommendation before we, you know, also make our recommendation.
Thank you. Alyssa?
I have a question about the equipment storage shed. The offices and maintenance shops, the new construction necessitates the removal of that. And I think I heard last week that it's in failure anyway. What is the plan for what's in there right now? Is that going into the existing building? Is that possible while it's under construction? I'm assuming not. Do we, do we buy another fleet stor-, not fleet storage, another equipment shed to replace that one? And where would it be if we did that?
Yeah, that's a series of storage containers with a canvas top on it, which is currently, the canvas top is failing. So that equipment, we would, in the process of this, we would shift that out of the way and we could move those storage containers over. So it would just be a matter of coordination.
And I just want to add that that storage space was part of the Weston and Sampson design to incorporate it into the new building. And it's, I'm showing here on this chart with a mezzanine area of 3,300. I'll go back to the plan. But basically, the idea was to capture some of the loss of that storage space in the new building. So it's less than what the Weston and Sampson building was showing, but there is, it is partly accommodated.
Well, Fran?
I just have a quick comment. And I personally might be the odd man out. And I'm all for compromise. But to me, this wasn't a compromise. It was something that we had to make smaller because of a few folks on the Finance Committee decided that they didn't want a new DPW building. We didn't have enough time to bring it to town meeting. And that was my recollection. It makes no sense to me at all to build a building that is not adequate for the town. So I had to get that off my chest.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm looking at my colleagues. We've got a suggestion from Jim that we, that we not move ahead with formalizing a vote for 4B tonight. But we give our colleagues on the Finance Committee a chance to review all the documents. They've certainly heard presentation from you folks. And presumably provide some time for a joint meeting at our next Select Board meeting, which is going to be very busy, frankly, or some other process. How, I know how Jim feels. Alyssa?
I'm sitting right here, and that is not what I heard from Jim. But he's not arguing with you. So I guess my interpretation is wrong. I thought you were saying that-
No, I'm just being calm.
Okay. I thought you had said that we could still, we could make a decision tonight independent of the Finance Committee's decision. Because what I had heard earlier was that we still have time and we have flexibility to make changes to the design of that new building. So that's not what you were saying? You were saying, let's wait?
Jim?
So let me say it more simply and more clearly. But I'm, I mean, this is just my thought. I'm not, you know, tied to it. My thought is, we now have, we've all heard, we've heard from all five of us about, you know, preferred, preferred options and ways to go forward. It's not unanimous, but it's, you know, it's clear the direction of our board if we were to take a vote. I think that's enough for the Finance Committee to then go ahead and have their next meeting come up with a recommendation, take a vote on it. And then at our next meeting, we can take a vote on it as well, formalize it. We don't need to meet with the Finance Committee to both agree on the same option. We do want to meet eventually with the Finance Committee to go into the details and to, you know, get this recording, recorded, a recording of, you know, going through all the options and laying them out. But I don't think that needs to hold, that, that big meeting between the two committees doesn't have to happen before we vote. Is that more clear?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Alyssa?
So I, my preference would be to go ahead and formally vote this board which option to move forward with so that in the intervening two weeks, there can be more analysis, assignments. I hear Arrow Street has not expended the entire $150,000 that town meeting appropriated. So there might be some additional questions that need to be answered. Even members of the Finance Committee might have questions. So my understanding is that the space for the new building includes a lot of different programming needs, mechanics and workshops and admin. And that there's a lot of flexibility with how that is laid out and even the total size of the building, that it could still change size. So I think that clear direction now from the board, based on the unanimous Building Committee recommendation, is what I'd want to do tonight, knowing that, acknowledging that we have a lot of additional discussions and decisions to make moving forward.
Thank you. I'll ask the manager if you have any suggestions of direction that we should go on. Is, if we delay for a couple of weeks, is that going to be critical? Or do you think we should move ahead with this?
I think, thank you for asking. Appreciate that. I'm very impressed with the work that Arrow Street did to capture all the ideas that were floating around in the last six months and put them into a really well put together analysis that gave us something to work from. It's clear the Building Committee recommends one particular option. And really, the purpose for, you know, moving forward is what do we continue to study before we start to redesign this building? Because this was the initial study that got us this far. There's been a few questions that I think require additional study. But we wouldn't necessarily want to do those, as mentioned earlier, on five different scenarios. So I think a good interim step to saying we're fully behind this project as proposed is to say that the board would like us to do additional study on option 4B. That way, it's focusing our work rather than continuing to have those options floating out there. That would be my recommendation, because I don't think there will be much in terms of next big steps until more funding is appropriated for design.
Thank you. David, it looks like you're about to make a motion there.
Well, I was just going to say that I think what we're adopting tonight is really an approach, right? And not the details, where we're not approving the design. And I think the approach, though, is, you know, setting that down is quite important. And, you know, Mr. Jarboe talked about this being a compromise. You know, I think this is close to the middle in terms of cost. You know, it's certainly much less cost than the previous solution. And it, but it's the lowest cost option to me that is workable, right? There are, there have been other suggestions, or even the ones on this sheet, like just renovate the existing building. That's really not a workable solution. I mean, I think the worst alternative is to ask town meeting to pay for something and then tell them afterward, oh, that's not adequate, right? That is a terrible thing, right? We have to, you know, be, say that what we're proposing, at least what this board is proposing, is, we think is adequate, right? It might have disadvantages compared to the, the other alternatives or more expensive alternatives, but it's, but it's adequate. I think this one is adequate. It also allows us then to move forward, as Alyssa was saying, with, you know, different sizes of things and different structures of the buildings and the facilities, how much was devoted to each, each part, whether there are optimizations or value engineering that could be done in those parts. So I think the approach is, is good. And I'm happy to make a motion. I move that the Select Board endorse the recommendation of the Building Committee for option 4B, Arrow Street's option 4B, for the, to proceed forward with the DPW design.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any other last minute discussion?
Yes.
Alyssa?
So I would like to find out from the town manager and the assistant town manager and maybe even the DPW director, what are the questions that you heard tonight? Because they're all flown out of my head that we'll be answering, sort of a, just a quick summary. But I also want to acknowledge that, you know, David, you're saying this is adequate, and Fran's just said it's not adequate. So I want to propose maybe a reframing for you, Fran, that it's adequate over a long period of time. So this is going to be more expensive in the long run than had we been successful at the election in April in passing the ballot question, right? Because construction costs are going to just continue to escalate year after year after year. So I guess it's sort of like the town people came to the ballot and said, this is just, you know, too much right now, following on the heels of an operating override, we're saying no to it. Or a certain percentage said, we're saying no to it. So I've heard people talk about houses and cars and, you know, I need to replace something on my car for $2,000 and it's going to get me another few years. But then eventually, I'm going to have to replace the car, the whole car. And that will be even more expensive because I've spent that money on the repair and then I'm going to have to spend more money. But that's what I can accept. That's what I can handle. That's what I can afford in the moment. So, you know, adding the fleet storage building, the new fleet storage building that's the right size, that's going to be adequate, whether that's 15 years from now, 20 years from now, that will be more expensive than, you know, if we did a brand new building all encompassing today, adding a wash bay later. That's going to be more expensive than building it, you know, right now. So it's going to be more expensive, but eventually it will be adequate. So I'm not happy about spending more money over a long period of time, but it seems like that's the only thing that's going to be successful.
Fran?
And I'm not happy about building something that's not adequate. I really feel that so strongly. And I'm sorry. And I wish, I would love to see a new facility, but I, I just feel that in my bones.
Thank you. David?
Can I make one attempt to convince you? So the, the, the facility part of this, this proposal is very, very similar to the one in the, in the, in the fine Weston and Sampson design. And we get twice as much vehicle storage as we had. Twice as much, right? I realize that we can't get every vehicle in that, but there are other things that we can do for pieces of equipment, right? And so it's not perfect, but it's, you know, it seems workable to me. I mean, I can go to town meeting and, with a straight face and say, you know, if people ask me and say, you know, is this a good alternative? And I would say, yes, you know, it's a good alternative. Whereas that's not true of some of the other alternatives, right? So, and I think that, you know, that then the, this proposal would last a generation, right? And then a generation hence, people are going to have to think about replacing the vehicle storage.
Jim?
I just wanted to defend Fran's right to vote against this. Not that anyone would be speaking in that way, but I think the last time we went through this process a year ago, you know, we had this split vote between the Finance Committee and the Select Board, unanimity on both sides. Because it, you know, it is such a painful pull between the, you know, the cost part and the functionality part and the longevity part. You know, this is a very tricky problem. And, you know, if what we end up with is that we end up with, you know, a majority on this board supporting a particular way forward and a majority on the Finance Committee supporting a particular way forward, that's still a lot better than where we were at last year.
Thank you. I'll call for the vote. We have a motion. It's moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
I would love to see the progression of the project in any way, shape or form, somewhat. So I don't know if that's a nay or, or not. But I, I am not, I'm sort of, I liked the Weston and Sampson proposal. And I really feel like if we veer off from that, I mean, having something without a wash bay with, with salted vehicles doesn't make sense to me. So I don't know. I guess it's a nay.
Okay. Four and one. Thank you. And thank you for the architects, guys that certainly helped us through a real rough spot. And to our friends and colleagues on the Finance Committee. I, I hope you, your committee will meet and come up with a recommendation and fully acknowledge that we do need, I would say, within the next month to set up a meeting where we can kind of tease out a lot of the questions that you've raised, Scott.
Scott Sullivan, Eight Pages Road, Chair of Finance Committee. I have one stupid question. And since everybody's here, I can just get the answer fast. Why don't we decentralize the equipment when we have weather conditions that are known in advance? Like if we had hypothetically an empty fire station somewhere in town and we knew it was going to snow or ice, couldn't we move some equipment to the empty fire station and then have faster access to the roads? Because if you're starting all the equipment from the same location and going to North Act and a South Act and going all over the place, isn't, doesn't it take longer to get the roads clear if you, especially if you have contractors coming in? Couldn't you take, let's say, a number of vehicles, put them in the empty fire station, send the contractors there, have them filled up with salt and give them the keys and have them take off from that point? Just a question. I'm just curious what the answer is. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll refer that one to Corey and perhaps that would be a good offline conversation because I think we'd get into a lot of, mired down in a lot of details on that. Now, I, I do think it's an interesting suggestion, especially where we might be left with a one surplus fire station at some point. So I think it's, it's worth consideration, but I think there might be a lot of operational issues as well. So I'll let Corey reach out to you on that through. I will ask the town manager to ask Corey to reach out to you. to ask Corey to reach out to you. Alyssa.
Does anybody down there have any summary for me, just so I can leave here tonight knowing what questions you heard from us that you'll be pursuing?
One question was the longevity of the renovated vehicle, vehicle storage facility. Fifteen to twenty was mentioned, but I don't, I don't think it's been a lot of time put into that estimate. So I think that'd be one question that we'd want to learn more about. Other questions were, a wash bay, what, what potential opportunity for future addition of a wash bay would there be and where would that maybe go? Under option four B. That's all I had. Nick, what else you got?
Yep. Some of the pieces of conversation that led to questions were how the phase construction will go onsite, how we're going to maneuver staff out of the current building into the new building in four B, and then how long that phase construction would take. That was a question that David had brought up. Onsite parking needs versus this proposal. Some conversations were based on the current parking that's available at the site and then if it's sufficient for the parking in four B that's shown. And I think that's all I had on the notes, but I plan on watching the video back tomorrow anyways.
Alyssa.
One more thing, and I've already asked this at the meeting last week, there are some structural changes that would need to be made in order, into the existing building that's renovated in order to get the additional vehicles stacking up to add a couple more doors. So I'm just wondering, how much is that going to add to the cost? Because it sounds like the structural parts of the renovations are, are pretty pricey.
Jim.
Here's another question, but maybe it can just be answered here rather than requiring research. The alternate fleet storage idea that you've sketched out here, is this a change in the design and construction or is this just an alternative way of using the space?
It's an alternative way of using the space, but it's dependent on a reconfiguration of the doors.
Okay.
Have Ann and then David.
Ann Chang, I'm on the building committee. I think that, I didn't think we had any more money left to answer all of these questions. And I thought that they would be coming from Arrow Street after we got the vote at town meeting to do the next stage of design. So my suggestion is to collate or gather up all the finance committee's suggestions, some of which I think are off the wall, but that's just a personal opinion, and then give them all to Arrow Street for the design section, which we will vote the funds for at town meeting.
Thank you. David.
So the thing that I was wondering about the wash bay is whether one of the mechanic space could be both a wash bay and a mechanic's bay for certain things. Right? I, I thought we might be able to, you know, it wouldn't, some of the lifts and stuff might not be workable in both areas, but some kind of mechanics operations would probably be okay to do in the wash bay. And so I was just wondering if that might work and so if we were cleverly able to use that. I also want to say that putting garage doors on the ends of the building is less structurally a problem than putting them on the sides of the building. And finally, I just wanted to, to thank Arrow Street because we may not have had too many questions for you tonight, but I, most of us watched your presentation to the finance committee. So we were, we were well informed going in. Thank you.
Yes, once again, thank you to Arrow Street. Folks have done a great job for us. We'll be in touch. Since it's now at least 7:10 PM, may read the next public hearing notice. Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing October 20th, 2025 at 7:10 PM, continued from October 6th, 2025, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 of the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, and virtually at actonma.gov/meeting/sb on the application of Hawthorne Realty Company for a site plan special permit under zoning by law section 10.4. The applicant proposes to combine the properties at 471 Great Road and 465 to 469 Great Road and construct two buildings to be used as building trade shops. No hazardous materials or waste are to be generated on site. Application materials and how to participate remotely are available online at actontownhall. The applicant has continued, has requested to continue talk to November 3rd, 2025 at 7:10 PM.
I move that we continue to November 3rd at 7:10 PM in this room.
Second.
Moved and seconded to continue until November 3rd, 2025, 7:10 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. All right. Next up, item five, discuss streamlining volunteer recruitment and onboarding process.
Mr. Chair, could I just say that the town moderator is with us? I didn't know whether you'd might want to take item seven ahead of the others.
That sounds good to me. We'll move to item seven, discuss select board goal, advance town meeting participation, access, education improvements, including early communication of warrant items to the public. The town moderator, care to come up? Benefit from your knowledge. I'll let David lead off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joanne Berry and I met a number of weeks ago now and discussed most of the points that are in our goal and those, um, points are in the memo that we, the two of us wrote to you and is, is in the packet. Maybe, uh, Joanne can proceed with, you know, her, her comments and I can fill in with, with, with other things.
Sure. Thank you for moving this forward. It's, I'm glad I learned more about the garage. But anyway, yeah, David and I met and thought of some different opportunities to help improve and approve attendance and make it more inclusive for town meeting and came up with a variety of ideas, just so that people know who are not on the memo. Things like advertising, using social media more, advertising through social media, all the, all the ways that people access information that we might not have been using so far, including things like short videos, TikTok, Instagram, all those things. More outreach to the apartments and condo residents who traditionally have lower attendance at town meeting. And I would add, Boxborough recently had a special town meeting and they held an open house, I don't know what else to call it, kind of an open house event at the library where the proponents or the sponsors of the different articles were there with maps, charts, just to answer questions. I think, and they were very pleased with the turnout. It was, I believe it was three hours. I'm not sure what time, but it was a couple of weeks before their special town meeting, which they just had. And people were able to get their questions answered and maybe some ones they hadn't thought of. But anyway, they could just go right in and ask about a different article, whatever article they had questions on. So I think that should be added to the list that David and I came up with. That's kind of one of those things like, oh, why didn't we think of that sooner? But there you go. I would, and especially with the DPW facility coming up again, I know folks will have a lot of questions and there probably will be other items that come up as the year goes Before the pandemic, there had been a committee to discuss or to make recommendations on improving town meeting. And one of the things that group came up with was to have a, a room available for parents and kids or anybody who wanted, like, if you were coming in a little late and didn't get a chance to eat, you could eat in there. If you want to bring your kids, they could come and the parents would be responsible for attending to them. But they could also participate in the meeting from that room. We would have an assistant moderator in there. And that never quite happened. The pandemic got in the way. So that could be an opportunity, have remote attendance at the senior center, which would be the same as virtual, you know, having the cafeteria or the other gym as overflow, except it would be at the senior center. Trying to get folks' questions answered so that there's less time on understanding what actually is happening than on discussing the, the merits of particular articles. Those were the main ideas. I'm sure there could be some other ones that could come up, but trying to make town meeting avail, more easily available and accessible to people who wish to participate or who, who hadn't thought of participating and realized that they could and it would be easier for them to do it. I don't know what else you want to add, David?
So, a little bit redundant with, with what Joanne just said, I think that the, the things that we covered kind of fell into three areas. One I would call advertising or outreach. And it, you know, things that we discussed, it doesn't have to be stodgy. It could be everybody being different. Right? Each of us could record a 30 second thing or any member of staff or any member of the public could record a 30 second thing, say why they think town meeting is cool or why it's easy to come and why it's not intimidating to come. So that, that kind of outreach or advertisement. To lessen the time for town meeting and the biggest idea we had there, like the Boxborough Forum, is a Q and A beforehand, that maybe it's more worthwhile than having each of us record our presentations, to have something in this room where people can come in and ask questions and we record that and maybe provide the, you know, let people view that as many times as they want to get their questions answered. There are towns that discourage asking questions at town meeting. They, they encourage constructive comments, like, I don't like this because, or I do like this because. But they, they try to get the questions out of the way beforehand to lessen the time during town meeting. And the final category, I would say, is, is accommodations and the accommodations, you know, an overflow room at the senior center, lessen the walking as much as possible for people going to the side, or at least optionally, cutting down on the, on the walking required. The room where, the informal room or whatever we call the, that, you know, you don't have to be perfectly quiet and your kid can do homework while you're, you know, also, you know, tuning into, to town meeting or eat your sandwich or whatever. So those, those three things. We also briefly discussed some of the, you know, having a virtual town meeting and there's some of the things that are outlined in the memo that's a, a difficult thing. Right? It's, it's the, the mechanisms for verifying that someone's a voter is, those are definitely not in place and they're not agreed upon as to what they should be. There are proposals, but they're, but they're not, not agreed upon. And there are also things that, you know, that is someone with less internet bandwidth or something like that is disenfranchised in that, in that situation. And, and also what do you do if the internet goes out or how do you even know? Right? So if someone, if the fire alarm goes off in the high school, the moderator is going to stop the meeting and say, you know, we're, we're going to pick up tomorrow. Right? And, you know, listen for things. But if half the people get disconnected because of a, an internet problem, how do we even know? And so there are questions like that and so that, you know, the, a really virtual town meeting is, we think is not ready for prime time.
So, thank you. Another issue to add into the mix, and I'd like to hear, especially the town manager way in on this because it would be another thing dumped in his lap. Years ago, on a number of occasions, we had a pre-town meeting. This goes back to the Dory Hunter era, probably the late 90s or early 2000s. My recollection was on a couple of years we ran it and they'd select three or four items that seemed like there had to be a lot of questions involving, you know, people wanted time to really tease out and get questions answered. And we had this pre-town meeting, as I recall, probably a month or so before the regular town meeting and was held in the junior high school auditorium. All I see is puzzled look, so apparently I'm a lot older than I thought I was, just to remember this so well. But it's, it's another possibility, sort of building on the suggestion from Joanne about, you know, an open house sort of thing. And when they, when we knew that there were going to be two or three items that were going to be particularly controversial and would need a lot of time to tease out, we did have those on a couple of occasions. Another possibility to think about, especially, you know, maybe the DPW project might be one. I don't know what else might be coming up. Any thoughts from the town manager on the logistics of having a pre-town meeting a month before a regular town meeting?
I think that would, I think that would be something that we certainly could do. As mentioned, some of the outreach efforts that we started five years ago, particularly the videos, if you can look back at the videos online and see how many views they received, and it's typically not, it's not a lot, but I mean, it's still, if a few hundred people watch it, then that's a few hundred people that are more informed than they were, than they were the day before. So that's a good thing. If, if it were to be a meeting, let's just say we publish the warrant, when did we publish it? In early April, probably. And the town meeting is usually the first, is the first week of Monday, first Monday of May. If we did it like the week after we published the warrant, so that nothing on it would, you know, would, is changeable and just say, this is what you're talking about in three weeks, have at us. I think it'd be fun. I, I don't know if, who would facilitate such a meeting or moderate such a meeting. But it's certainly, I think it's been done in other communities on one or two issues. If you just had the whole 40 articles and said, we're going to go through them all, it'd almost be like a town meeting preview or a town meeting rehearsal. So I guess all those things are good outreach. You just hate to have people go to that and not go to town meeting. Or I would anyways.
Then, then that would, if, I mean, I, I agree, that's definitely worth trying. I think it's worth trying pretty much anything to see what is successful in our community with folks who live here. If you start having a meeting of substance with no voting and you're not going to have the same substance when you can vote, that will affect people's willingness to participate. Because that's a version of the Australian ballot, which they use in New Hampshire and people don't go for the information, they just go for the vote. Because that's what people want to do.
Jim.
I just want to respond to some of these ideas. And first of all, the overall impression, really positive, really liked the thoughtfulness of the ideas and the content of the ideas as well. I'll, I'll pass on that the, the separate room where people can be, you know, a little bit more, a little bit more space to move around, eat and do things. It works really well in our church. We happen to call it the wiggle room, in case, you know, you need a jargon phrase that might draw people there. So I'm in favor of that. In terms of the pre-meeting events, I think we're talking about two kinds of different things and I want to speak in favor of one of them, I think, which is the kind of open houses that the, the planning department put together, puts together, where there's typically multiple stations and people come in when they want to come in and go to whatever stations they want to and ask questions of the people. want to, and ask questions of the people that are there staffing that station. So that's not, so on the one hand, it's not really something you can usefully tape, but it, it might draw more people in if they know that, "Oh, I can go there. I have my one burning question. I can go to my one area, ask it, and go home and, you know, get home for dinner." So it might bring more people in. You know, I can imagine having particular stations that are just on one, you know, particularly exciting article, and then there might be some that are like, you know, "Here's, here's all the items on consent. If you have any questions about any of them, one person could potentially staff that." So I think that was, well, there was, you sort of have this addendum at the end about alternate structures, you know, representative town meeting, virtual town meeting, becoming a city. I love talking about that stuff, but I think it's fine to leave that out of the scope of what we're doing for this particular goal. Yeah, I mean, it's great stuff, but it's far, any of those are far away. I agree that we're not ready for a virtual town meeting, open town meeting, but I am excited by some of the options that are being developed. But I know it's going to be a while. I mean, there's this whole technical conversation, then there has to be a legislative conversation. So we can, we can put off deciding that for a while. So if we do have the more open house style random thing, I think we may still need to do videos. Even if they're done after the question and answer period, then they could at least have the benefit of being done knowing what typical questions are. So you can make sure to, if you heard a question from a couple of different people, you can make sure to answer it in your presentation.
Thank you.
John? Wanted to add, with regard to the night of town meeting, having a room available for more space and sort of less, more casual. We did do that a few times, and we had the cafeteria set aside for that purpose, or maybe it was the gym, set aside for that purpose. We had people go there, I think a few families were there. The problem we had in 2023 was we needed every square inch of the entire high school to conduct the meeting, so such, such a space, we wouldn't be able to provide. And that, I mean, we had the, until two weeks ago, I thought that was the biggest town meeting in history. I found out that Tewksbury had a bigger one, unfortunately, when they were talking about a casino in Tewksbury. But it, that's, my point is, it's also issues that bring people to town meeting, but that's not news.
David? So I appreciate Jim's suggestions. I just, not an argument against, but one of the things to consider is how to get the, as much of the people get to hear the answers that they want before, to shorten town meeting, right? If we have the workshop style, anybody can go right to the station they want and get their question answered, but that's their question, right? And if a dozen people have the same question, or 50, or even two, we haven't gotten that out. So I think we need some kind of blend of this, and we can try different things. And, you know, I don't know how we, the board wants to proceed from here. We could have a working group try to develop a specific thing to do for our spring town meeting, based on input from the board, or we can come back and discuss it again another time, or what, what people want. But it doesn't, if we try something next year and it doesn't work perfectly, we can change it again. So just trying to kind of get the, it from many sides. Thank you. Fran?
I just wanted to say how I love the idea of Jim's description of an open house kind of thing, where you can walk in and hear about different articles. Not all of them, but just a few that may be hot topics. And a family room, or that kind of wiggle room is a nice idea as well.
Alyssa?
Thank you both for starting this conversation. One thing that we should keep in mind is that, in tandem with our efforts, the League of Women Voters will also be pursuing Make Town Meeting More Accessible. So if we do create a working group, we should definitely find out what they're doing, so that we're not both doing the exact same thing. And more, more folks to bounce ideas off of, I think, would be better. I do love the idea of TikTok-style videos, because I think people have time for 30- to 60-second videos. I love the idea of making town meeting cool. And I think that a lot of folks, especially younger folks, that's how they get information. So I think it would be really appealing, and maybe even, you know, get a new demographic in, or at least more representation from the younger demographic. Definitely a wiggle room, and I think that it would only not work if we were expecting 2,500 people at the high school. But every other town meeting, it would be fine to have that space for people to eat their dinner, or have their kids spread out on the floor with games, or whatever. I think also, Town Meeting 101 outreach would be good, so that people who are brand-new to town meeting and don't know how to participate. And I know that we have existing information. We have, like, written guides and videos, and there's a lot of information on the moderators' page. But doing that either in person, at a workshop or open house, or creating updated content would be good. So, you know, I think it'll be more accessible than the information that's printed at the back of the warrant, which tells you, "What words do you need to use in order to end debate and, and take a vote? How do you make a motion?" That sort of, that sort of thing. So not only content about the articles that we'll be voting on, but content about just town meeting in general, like parliamentary procedure, to make it more accessible to people. And I also want to make sure that in this whole process, we're not shutting down ideas, because five years ago, or 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, we had a committee that looked at this and got feedback from the public, and they said, "No, that won't work." So one of the examples is change the day of town meeting. And I understand that that involves a voter of town meeting to make that change to the charter, I think, when town meeting happens. But we, you know, we don't have to rely on the outcome of a previously constructed committee, and what their recommendation was. Oh, you know, it's going to disenfranchise people who have soccer games, or go to synagogue if we hold it on a Saturday. Like, we might get a different answer this time. So I just want to be, make sure that we're being expansive and open-minded, because what the public wants, what voters want, and what would work best for them, might have changed. And certainly, a lot of things have changed since the pandemic for people, just like how they live their lives and what works for them. And I love the special attention to apartments and condos, people who are typically underrepresented. I love the idea of flyers to them, notice, notice about getting them out to town meeting.
So, David, how, how would you like to proceed? Would you like to think about assembling a working group to pursue these? Or do you have enough information to come up with a recommendation between you and the moderator about things that we should explore more deeply?
So can I just ask the board what the emphasis of the board was? It sounds like if the space is available, a wiggle room, everybody's in favor of. And I'm going to call it a wiggle room from now on. And some, you know, and also, everybody seemed in favor of some kind of innovative advertising or outreach, which I think, by the way, could include instructions. I mean, just going, people don't offer motions and stuff the first time they go, I think, as a general rule. I'm not saying they can't, but people just need to know that you check in, you go sit down, you listen, you vote. You know, it's really, I want to tell people it's not intimidating to go to town meeting. So there's that kind of outreach we can do for all manner of things. And then finally, some approach to getting information out ahead. So the first two are kind of pretty straightforward. There might be little tweaks we need to figure out, you know, exactly how to kick it off. The last one maybe is a little bit more difficult. Did I, first of all, reiterate what the board's feelings are correctly? And how do you, all you think that should happen? Should we, you know, I think a working group, we should ask the town manager to kick off. And we can add some members from, you know, the League of Women Voters, the moderator, obviously, me, if you want me to continue in this process. And then, I mean, it's one of, it's one of the goals we have, right? So I think it was number one goal, right? So I think a working group is to try to figure out what we can do next year as a, as kind of a pilot for that pre-information, I'll call it, you know. Alyssa?
I think a working group makes sense. I would want to make sure that the right folks are on it. That's not really what I mean, the right folks. I just mean that we should have representation, not only from the league and the town moderator, but we should have maybe students, somebody from the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission, someone from Council on Aging, someone from Commission on Disabilities, so that there are different demographics represented. Or alternatively, making sure that a smaller working group without representatives from all of those different places goes to those meetings to solicit feedback. Because I don't know that we can, I don't know that it's for the five of us to decide which one or two or three things we should pilot at the May 2026 meeting. It might be decided, what do you focus on after you get that feedback from those different stakeholders, if that makes sense.
Sure. I think that it's another, if it's majority, not staff, it's another committee, which it could be a committee, right? It's, or a short-term commission, right? Which, that's what it's been done in the, in the past, right? We had town meeting improvement committees, which were short-term. Maybe I can brainstorm a little bit with the town manager and the town moderator offline, and come back with a proposal for the board to consider, whether it be a working group, or a short-term committee, or whatever.
That sounds good. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you very much. And thanks for setting this goal and actually working on it. Not, I'm not accusing you of anything, just saying, thank you, thank you for working on it. Good night.
Thank you.
So, we'll move to discuss streamlining volunteer recruitment and onboarding process. That's Jim or Alyssa, or both of you. Jim, you raised your hand first.
Thanks. Yeah, Alyssa and I did meet, so this is a lot, a lot of input is from her. I think tonight, so there's two documents in the packet. There's, there's a semi-structured brainstorming output that, all I really want to take out of there is a couple of questions that I want to get feedback from the board about. The other ideas are still, you know, not fully baked. The other, the other document is a note, a potential note to all boards and committees recruiting some people for, to fill out the volunteer coordinating committee. And I think, I would like to hear if there's any, you know, concerns or edits about that, so that I can get, get that out there on the early side. The next VCC meeting is November 13, as I recall, and, you know, people that are interested in joining the VCC will want to attend a VCC meeting. So getting the word out before that would be good. So the questions that I'd like to hear from the board about are the first two questions in this brainstorming document, which is, "What are the problems we're trying to solve?" Let me read the goal out loud, got it fresh in our head. "Work with volunteer coordinating committee to create a plan for the future of volunteer recruitment and onboarding that includes improved orientation and streamlined reappointment process." So again, out of that, that could be a lot of different things. So I would love to hear from board members about what specifically are the problems we're trying to solve. And after that, then to hear about how we would know we had succeeded. Were there other things we wanted to make sure to cover tonight, Alyssa, or was that the basics?
I think also, something that you had titled, maybe Options to Consider. Let me just pull up that.
Oh, the other topics thing at the bottom?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that would be great, too. So that would be both, one of the, one of the paragraphs there is a sentence, is a, is a thought that, it seems like one of the things at the core of this is the good effective functioning of town boards and committees. If they work well, that both encourages new people to apply, because they watch the meeting and then go, "Hey, this is the place I want to be," and encourages current members to stay and grow, and helps create better outcomes for the committees, which is ultimately what we, you know, part of the reason we have committees is to get stuff done. And there are consultants who specialize in effective functioning of committees, and I wondered if anybody had any thoughts about how we could get the benefit of that expertise in some kind of cost and time-effective way. Because I can easily imagine how to do this in a really expensive way, and I don't want to do that. And the second topic there was about what oversight and review is needed to surface and resolve problems. And the two examples we came up with, not that these are happening anywhere in any particular place, but just in case, what if a committee chair's way of doing things discourages others from joining? You know, how do we, as a board or as liaisons, intervene? And what's the process when communication breaks down between committee chair and liaison, or among committee members? So those were things I'd also, we'd also love to hear from people about. So, Mr. Chair, if you just wanted to call on people, and I'd take lots of notes, that would be great.
Okay, thoughts? I, I'll provide one idea. The issues that I see, and we touched on a little bit, who should take the lead on recruiting members of the committees? And whether it's VCC, or frankly, I think a lot more work could be done by the chair of the affected committee. I think, you know, just as an example, Conservation Commission, it's a highly technical field. People need a lot of background. Bring in a new member that doesn't have a great deal of background, takes, there's a learning curve involved in that. So I think that if a chair truly understands all of the intricacies of that committee's work, and they would be in probably a better position to reach out and try to recruit new members rather than VCC, that, you know, is trying to staff 40 different boards and committees, and they wouldn't have the depth of knowledge that the chair. So I think, I think we should certainly encourage the chairs of the various committees to look very proactively for new members. And I would kind of put a lot of the onus on And I would kind of put a lot of the onus on them. They're more like, you know, going back to my example of, you know, Conservation Commission, you sit there and you have a hearing and you get half a dozen concerned neighbors that come forward with questions, those folks might be potential members to join the committee. They've shown an interest in it, and, you know, they're doing a little bit of research. So I would encourage that as sort of a focal point, to try to get the committee chairs more involved in it. The downside of that is that you don't want to have a situation where you develop an all-boys network that you always reach out to your friends. So that's something that we need to be aware of, that we want to get a wide range of folks that come forward with, that want to participate. But I think the place to start, I think, is the chair. And I think, you know, I think everybody that chairs committees now understands the need for developing a diverse demographic in your committee. But I would, I would stress that as a starting point. I think David was about to raise his hand, and I stepped all over him. David?
No, I, not complaining or anything. The only thing that occurred to me is possibly sending different requirements for different levels. So, for example, maybe if most committees had associates, or if we, they didn't have associates now, and we added associates to the ones that didn't have them. And associates required a less level, a lower level of scrutiny to get in, right? You know, it's a non-voting thing, but you can be officially a member. You know, you get to comment, you know, you get to be part of the discussion. You know, I definitely, you know, one of the, the first thing that you listed in your brainstorming is, you know, the long time it takes to get onto committees. I've certainly run into that with potential nominees, that by the time you discuss with them, and the time they can get on the committee, it's two and a half months later or something. That is a big impediment. Maybe there could be a lower bar for associates. Maybe we have a different bar for the statutory committees and other advisory committees. It seems to me that there are three levels. There's the full members of statutory committees, you know, where they actually have to adjudicate zoning or wetlands or health, you know. That's kind of the highest bar, I think, of being a full member. Something in between is a full member of an advisory committee. And the lowest level is an associate member of an advisory committee, maybe needs the least scrutiny. I don't know where their associate members of the statutory committees fall. You know, we'd have to figure out some thing. But hopefully it could be made easier for the lower tiers. And then, once someone is, you know, if someone's an associate for a year, well, first of all, if they're associate right away and they participate in the discussion, and they say, oh, this is not really what I thought it was going to be, and they need to bow out, or this is definitely, I want to move forward. If they've been an associate for some months, perhaps we can make that easy for them to transition to be a full member. Finally, you know, to add on to what Dean was saying about recruiting, I think we should encourage any member, not just the chair, to recruit for their committee. Because, so that gets away a little bit from a smaller group of old boys in the committee, right? So if, you know, if you have five members of a committee, and all five of them, they have different friends and acquaintances and stuff in town, they can pursue different people if they need staffing. So, and by the way, kudos to both Alyssa and Fran, who have done outreach to try to generically recruit for our boards and committees. I really appreciate that, you know, whether it's at Oktoberfest or other situations. You guys have put in time to try to get that done, and thank you. So, that's it for me.
Fran?
I just wanted to quickly add that not only, you know, we can all recruit for a different, I certainly recommend folks for different committees, so it doesn't really only have to be the liaison, so if you find a good candidate. And the lag time between filling out an application and the vetting process has been frustrating, so, yeah. If you have incredible staff support for any of your committees, who just take it upon themselves to, you know, send applications, recruit, say, at a farmer's market, it's just, some of our staff are pretty incredible in that regard.
Jim, follow-up?
No, I was just noting that David raised his hand.
Yeah, David.
I just have a question. Somewhere in these documents that I read before the meeting, you guys were talking about possibly having electronic application or something? Did I read that somewhere? So my question is, how feasible is that? And I think that would make a difference, right? You know, someone at Oktoberfest, if you tell them the Recreation Commission could use more members, this is the QR code. Cool, they might apply for it right there on the front.
Jim?
The good news is there already is an electronic application. The bad news is it's, if you go to different parts of the website, sometimes you're pointed towards it, and sometimes you're pointed towards the old PDF. So the VCC chair has made some suggestions about cleaning that up. But yeah, it is there. I haven't seen a QR code for it yet, but that's a natural next step.
Jim?
Are there any concerns about my working with the town manager to send out this recruitment note to boards and committees? No one mentioned it, so I thought I should check. No? Great, will do.
Thank you for doing that.
Alyssa?
I just want to add that I think some of the ideas for finding out best practices in other communities are going to be really helpful for us, to help us think of different ways of doing things. We might want to adopt certain practices from other communities that serve them well. I'm also wondering if perhaps the liaisons might have a discussion either with a chair of the committees that they have liaison assignments to or an actual agenda item. It may not work so well for, you know, Conservation Commission or ZBA, because those are generally hearings. I guess I would just suggest that if you hear from, or if you can actually proactively reach out to chairs, or if you want to have a discussion with an advisory committee, actually with the whole committee on their agenda, I think it would be interesting to get feedback from those folks. And Jim, you wrote down that an initial step might be a survey to everybody, but maybe those conversations can happen sooner than we can get a survey put together and distributed. Because I'm sure that, I mean, I've had casual conversations at different events with people about things that are working really well or things that are not working really well. I'm going to move to this committee because I, you know, this experience. So I think that that feedback from our volunteers who are currently serving is going to be useful for this process.
Just a little anecdotal story in that the HDC is always looking for members, and they had sent out a letter to all architects in town and got two, two, hopefully, members or something to develop into a new member. So that was kind of a cool thing to do.
Okay, next steps?
Yeah, we will certainly, we'll send out this note, and I'll continue working on these possible next steps. And if there's other board, if there's a board member who's willing to continue to be consulted about this, I will continue consulting with her.
Great, thank you very much. Item six, discuss acting leadership group meeting. John?
Thank you. Last week in this room, the acting leadership group had its second meeting of the budget season, and it went pretty well. Some of the takeaways were that the next meeting date is scheduled to be determined. We had a little trouble identifying a morning that worked for everybody, but that happens every year, I would say. And then we get into a groove, and then we set the schedule for the rest of the season. The deficit for FY27 is currently sitting at over $4 million. So that was the bulk of the conversation, was that issue. And since both the town and both of the school districts that we fund are just in the early stages in budget preparation, there wasn't a lot of discussions about changes to spending, because we haven't identified our specific needs for the coming year. But that'll come. I think our preliminary budget presentation to this board will be on next week, or the 3rd of November. And at that point, we'll have high-level preliminary budget estimates for what we're looking at for FY27. And the school district, I think, is going to have that before the end of the year. So we'll, we'll continue to work at it. There wasn't any specific calls to action from the meeting, but that's the update that I can come up with.
Great, thank you. Jim?
The $4 million, that's schools plus town or just town?
That's the entire, you know, that's the entire plan. So the entire plan, we need to balance before every year. And right now, the challenge to balance it will require us to solve a $4 million deficit.
Got it, thanks. Oh, and another question. Have we heard anything substantive from Minuteman yet?
We did hear from Minuteman. They, after many years of significant increases due to the enrollment shift, I think we've leveled off and steadied a bit. So last year, our net change year-over-year was actually a decrease. And we are projecting it to be approximately a 3% increase, I think. And when we talked to the business office over there, they said that's a good number to use for now.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, two things. One is just to note that the, the numbers are not final and everything, but the, at the end, towards the end of the meeting, I just watched the meeting, the superintendent said that just the increases in healthcare would eat up the full, normal Proposition 2.5 increase for the year, which means everything else is level funded, not level services, level funded. And if you need to increase in one area, you need to probably lay off people in the other area, right? So that's, that's with normal, you know, Proposition 2.5 funding. Second, at the end of the meeting, I encouraged ALG to apportion the revenue. ALG always used to do this, and we've gotten away from it in the last few years. You know, and that has two huge disadvantages in my mind. One is unless you get some proposal out for people to react to, you don't know the magnitude of any problem, right? So just based on some initial, I'll even call it an educated guess, or you have a discussion at ALG where, you know, people make the case for a particular thing, ALG can come to consensus on these are the initial percentages for the entities that we fund. And then, that gives the entities something to plan to. And then, in a future meeting, they can say, you know, it was tough, but we were able to make that work, or I don't see how this works, right? And it's, without that last thing, you can't tell if you're going to need an override, right? So the reason, you know, some people have pointed out that we used to know whether we were going to need an override early in the year, that's because we apportioned revenue in the early in the year, and then could tell, oop, that's not going to work. So until we do that, you know, you know, we, you know, are not making any progress. ALG has been reactive the past few years and has not taken the bull by the horns in order to apportion revenue. We've waited, and they've more managed expenses, which is what really FinCom's job is supposed to be. And so, anyway, I, I'm hoping that ALG does that, and I hope that the members from this board advocate for that.
Thank you, Alyssa.
So, springboarding off of that, I heard from our facilitator that he would like to have each entity's reaction or position, initial position, feelings about an operating override. So I think that that's something that this board should discuss before our next ALG meeting. And I don't know when that's going to be. So it doesn't have to be tonight, it could be at our November 3 meeting. But for those, anybody who didn't watch, I shared that I wasn't eager to pursue that as an option. But to David's point about portioning revenue and having the time, advance morning in order to fully discuss it.
I think that's a good point. And I think, I think it's something we probably should put in with a, in our next agenda with a specific question, so that the public will know that we're going to be discussing whether there's going to be any support for an override. I think it's, I think it's premature to discuss it and vote on it tonight, especially since we don't really know when the next ALG meeting is going to happen anyway. So it's probably going to be after our next November 3 meeting. So, but a good thing to keep in mind when we prepare the next agenda. David? Jim?
Just reflecting on the last couple of years, I want us to be sure that if we're talking about ALG matters, we're, you know, we're presenting some thoughts or opinions, but we're not binding the representatives to ALG to a particular position, so that they can really have a useful back and forth with the other members of ALG coming to come up with a decision. If they're stuck in a position because we've told them they have to do a certain thing, that prevents the magic of the consensus process from happening on ALG. But I still think it'd be really useful to have a conversation about any of these topics, as long as we pay attention to the difference between, you know, giving guidance and, you know, taking a vote on a particular position prior to an ALG meeting.
Thank you. David?
So with complete respect for the facilitator and everybody else trying to figure out whether we need an override, we don't have any information on whether to base any decision. And, you know, if someone else has another way of doing it... And, you know, if someone else has another way of doing it, that's completely fine. I'm, I'm, but I think that we need to go through the exercise of having proposed splits of revenue and letting people react, right? I mean, without any, you know, if we can come up with a split that works for both entities, even if both entities need to make some sacrifice, I'm guessing that we would want to support that. I'd probably want to support that. But if we make a, an educated split, right, and both entities come back and say, this is what it means to the schools and this is what it means to the town, and we consider that unacceptable, right? Either we can tweak the percentages, maybe that works, maybe it's worse for one entity than the other, we can tweak those, or if they're, it's just dire for both, we might want to consider an override. But I, at least for me, I would not want to consider an override until we've tried to apportion the revenue. I don't know how I would, I mean, I would have to, I could put in, make my own ALG sheet and guess what it might be, but it would be not agreed to by anybody, right? I can say, I'm going to give the, the, the school district 5.1%, and I'm going to give the town 2.9% and whatever it is, and say, and, but it's, it's, it's not based in anything. It's not based in any kind of agreement or consensus, right? So I would like ALG to, to do that apportionment.
Thank you. Alyssa.
So David, you said educated split. What information is required for the ALG to make that decision?
So as a straw man, ALG can just do it with the discussion among its members, and that's what we did in the past. You know, we just said we have this much revenue. Do we want to try to do an even percentage for both entities, which is a different number of dollars, right? If we do an even percentage for both entities, is that fair for this year, right? I mean, what's reasonable changes from year to year? Or do we want to bias it towards one entity or the other, right? And I think you can kind of get to that in one morning's discussion, and because it's not permanent, right? You can say, this is what we're setting as the goal, right? You know, then, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Manager, please go off and tell us what this means in general terms to your budgets. And they come back and say, we would have to do this, that, and the other thing. And then you can tweak those numbers or say, oh, it's those numbers, that situation is not acceptable. And then we can do a couple of things right there. We can use the untaxed levy to get its more dollars to split. Suppose that the initial percentages are good for one entity, and the other entity is really feeling, you know, in a bad situation, terrible situation, we can say, okay, we can take $800 of the untaxed levy and give it to the, the entity that's having the problem. Does that work? And please come back and tell us. And if we, if we use all the untaxed levy and we still don't have a reasonable proposal for the town, then we have to consider an override, you know, and then it's up to the taxpayers. But I wouldn't want to go there without some understanding of what it means if we just try to do things the, quote, "normal" way without an override.
All right. One, one last comment, and then I think we're kind of getting into what we're supposed to be talking about at the next meeting. So Alyssa, what do you have to say?
I have, let me rephrase my question. So what information goes into the decision? So you're saying, look at the revenue and then decide whether it's going to be evenly split, different dollars, between the two entities, or will it be biased towards one entity or another? What is the info that you need in order to make that decision? Because if we don't, if I don't understand the information that's necessary, then I'm anticipating each entity presenting the, you know, trying to present it, you know, we will experience the greatest harm if we don't have the higher split, or if it's even, or, or going down, you know, well, here's what we cut over the last few years, well, here's what we cut or delayed over the last few years. So I'm just looking for the, not how does it happen, but what information is the decision based on?
So both of these, in my mind, are due to the feedback from the manager and the superintendent, right? That, and it just really broad-brush numbers, because they won't have done their budgets yet, right? And so, you know, one broad-brush number is that just the health insurance increases, it's a 2.5% increase of the school district's budget, it's probably similar for the town. And then where do you, you know, what other things, you know, what number of dollars do you need to pay the normal salary increases for staff? Because if you can't pay the normal salary increases for staff, you have to get the money from somebody else, right? Because you have to pay your staff or lay off people, right? And so it's, it's a little bit in the back and forth in the beginning. It's not always worked well, but it used to be that we would set a percentage, get feedback from the manager and the superintendent, and then adjust the percentage. And I was never, in a year where we did the percentage and then the, the, well, I should, that's not quite true. In, in the year that we did the override, it was in that initial discussion where the superintendent hit us with some top, you know, a half a dozen or handful of things that were pushing the school district over the edge. And I'd say a majority of us on ALG that year were, were assuming that we would not have an override that year. If you had asked everybody, anyone two months before who was on ALG, I think none of them would have said, we're going to have an override. But after that, it became obvious, you know, there's no way we can get these numbers to add up without dire consequences. And so then we had, then the, the conversation changed into what should the magnitude of an override be and that kind of thing.
Thank you. Okay. There will be an agenda item about this at our next meeting. Before I go on to consent, something I neglected to discuss in my opening remarks is, all of you folks have responded back that you will be in attendance at the multi-board meeting Wednesday. And, you know, this is the first time we've tried to do this, so don't really know what's going to happen, what the output is going to be. I'll be making some initial remarks right at the beginning, and they will frankly reflect kind of my own personal feelings, because obviously we haven't discussed this as a board. We've got 90 minutes for this meeting to occur, and we're going to have five different entities all wanting to make their pitch. So remarks will have to be very brief and straightforward. I would encourage you after I make my remarks, which will be brief, you know, two minutes. If other members of the board wish to make their remarks as well, that would be great. I have no predisposition in any way of what folks should say or how we're going to say it. It's, say, we're in uncharted territory here. But I think, you know, we will have to be cognizant of the time constraints here. David, I specifically am thinking about your remark you've made about trying to come up with a split, and the, the split between of the revenues between the town side and the school side. I think that would be a good point that I've not addressed in my remarks. So that's one item in particular, which I think, you know, it's, it's sitting out there, and we might as well get out in front of it. And, you know, for any of the rest of you, I certainly encourage you to participate. Like I say, it is, time constraints are pretty rigorous for this. With that, I'll move on to the consent items. Item eight, approved traffic calming policy. Item nine, approved meeting minutes October 6, 2025. Item 10, appoint Fang Yang as an associate member from full member with a term to expire, term to end on June 30, 2026. And I guess the question is, what committee?
Oh, sorry. VCC.
VCC. Thank you. And number 11, approve a one-day malt and wine license for Acton Memorial Library at 468 Main Street on November 12, 2025.
Move to approve consent items nine through 11, noting that item 10 is, the appointment is to the VCC.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept nine, 10, and 11. 10 has edited. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Approved. We'll go back to item eight. Jim.
Just a couple of small things. Just, first of all, it seemed helpful to make this new policy visible. So I was wondering how, is there a timeframe in mind for when this would become live, assuming we approve it tonight, which I don't have any doubt about?
Yeah, we would, we would implement it in the coming weeks. I think it's, getting it online will be easy. Sort of a secondary outreach and informing the public about it would, would be a different, you know, would take longer, but we could certainly get it online where it says, in the policy, directly, in the policy document, it directly says where the information will be posted. So we would do that at a minimum and then take it from there. And I think the, the thing that we would really benefit from in our office, and maybe each of you out in the community, is that when a member of the community approaches us, we have a place that we can point directly to say, this is it right here. This is what you would need to do if you're interested in making changes on your street. So I think it'll be word of mouth.
Jim?
Couple more follow-ups. A suggestion I have is to first focus on getting the pace car program going. The process for traffic improvements includes references to the pace car program, you know, like if you have a certain percentage of people signed up, that gives you, you know, extra points. So we want to have that program ready, and it, it's, it's not fully specified in the, in the document. So I think it'll take a little bit, it'll take a surprising amount of time to get it working. But I think it's a great program. I look forward to having a little pace car sticker on the back of my car to remind me to always drive the speed limit when I'm within Acton, because I don't do that. What's the last point? The, another key part of the policy is the, the Traffic Management Group and having a publicly available address to reach it, the TMG at actonma.gov, which does not exist yet. So I would encourage you to, to create that and fill it with at least a person so that if anybody like reads this online in our packet and starts trying to implement something, they, they will at least reach someone rather than getting a, a mail error back. And that, I'm really looking forward to it. I think we could also consider, you know, we have traffic calming requests in front of us already that are in process, and some of them might make sense to just move right into this process.
Okay. David.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I know of one neighborhood who I think will apply as soon as this process is, is ready, and maybe the gentleman from Chadwick would also try to get, get his neighbors interested in, in applying. I also wanted to say that there's one person online with their hand raised.
Okay. Let's hear from the person whose hand is raised.
Hi, it's just Chair from PR Matt App, and I just want to thank you for making the distinction between signalization and traffic calming. And I also hope that you add at some other point, or at least consider adding that, that it's good to do traffic calming first before you decide to pursue or spend a lot of engineering time on signalization, and then see, take some period of time after traffic calming has been put in place and see what happens. So in other words, instead of relying on 10-year-old accident data, look at what happens after traffic calming, because I think that Cory's done a really good job at traffic calming stuff, and I think that we should give that a chance. Also, I just went through, where was it? Lexington, not a day or so ago, and they've got two of these mini roundabouts, and they're fabulous. And I hope that you go and check them out. One, they're, one is on either side of the downtown area. So thank you so much for making that distinction, and I hope that you consider adding at some point that we do traffic calming first before we start spending a lot of money on signalization, which can often make things worse. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Call for vote on consent item number eight. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay. It's passed. Looking for one more motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Wrote and second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.